Good evening, I'd like to call your attention. We're gonna get our meeting started and I'd like to ask Board Member Chrissy Pratt. Excuse me. Thank you, we're glad to see you. But we're calling our meeting to order, I'd like to turn to Board Member Chrissy Pratt to open us up.
Good evening, everyone's very chatty, but if you wouldn't mind standing with us and joining with us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you, you may be seated.
Thank you. Tonight we'll begin our meeting by recognizing our August Employee of the Month, will Charles Highsmith please come to the podium? Okay, okay, yeah. We have some board members joining us by the phone, um, Board Member Alan Sharouse and Kim Erby. Building walls and repairing signs and changing locks, these are all tasks that happen throughout the district on a regular basis. When it is time to get the job done, our maintenance team deploys one of our skilled carpenters to save the day. Charles Highsmith is one of those carpenters, a member of the Team GCS for seven years. Highsmith keeps a smile on his face for every job, properly responding to requests or any task that's set before him. Gabrielle Brown, Director of Media Relations, wrote, "Charles Highsmith exemplifies dedication, professionalism, and the collaborative spirit that drives Guilford County schools forward. As the district's carpenter, Charles consistently brings a positive attitude and can-do mindset to every task, often arriving with a smile and a solution in hand. His prompt response to maintenance needs across both the former and new administrative buildings has been instrumental in ensuring safe, functional, and welcoming environments for staff. Throughout our transition to the new district office, Charles has gone above and beyond addressing facility issues, supporting colleagues, and helping teams adjust smoothly so that we can focus on our shared mission of student success. His reliability, craftsmanship, and care for others makes him a true asset to the Guilford County community. Charles received a $50 gift card courtesy of the Greensboro J.C.'s, and during the month of August, your photo will be displayed at the district central offices and in the Greensboro J.C.'s office. At this time, I'd like to ask Board Member David Coats to read aloud the certificate honoring Charles.
The certificate reads, "Guilford County Board of Education, Certificate of Recognition Presented to Charles Highsmith, Carpenter, for the Employee of the Month, sponsored by the Greensboro J.C.'s. It's dated August 2025, it's signed by our Superintendent Dr. Oakley and our Chair, President Dina Hayes." So I'd like to present this to you.
Thank you. Hi, we'd like to hear from you.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity, um, I don't know if everybody knows this, but a lot of people I've worked with for the last four years have been threatening if I was named Employee of the Month, I was not gonna do any more work around this stuff. But it's always in lighthearted, and I never expected this was gonna happen, I don't even, I think Dr. Oakley might have heard me say that once before, but... But I appreciate the opportunity, I don't take it lightly, and um, I said once before, I take everything I do, I try to do as a, treat everybody as customer service, everybody that you meet is supposed to provide a service for, so. And I've met a lot of good people, a lot of people up here I've known, I can't go through all the names, but I do appreciate it, and uh, thanks for the opportunity, and I appreciate it, thank you.
Well, we appreciate you, and we'd like to shake your hand. And any of your colleagues that are here with you, your family or any of your colleagues that are here with you, we'd like to shake their hands as well. We're now at Public Comments, and we do have ten speakers signed up, and if you alternate in the event that someone is not here. We'd like to ask our speakers, as you come to the podium, to say your name and what you want about your address. You have three minutes to make your comments, when the amber light comes on, you have about fifteen seconds left, and when the red light comes on, your time is up, and we would like for you to wrap up your comments, so the next speaker can begin with their comments. If people in the audience support what's being said, we would like for you to demonstrate that by doing this, so that the speaker can continue uninterrupted. If you have any concerns about a student or staff matters, we will have someone that can meet with you in the lobby to address those, but we ask you not to mention student and staff publicly by name. We'll begin with our first speaker, Patricia DeBeere, followed by Ann Beatty. Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
For generations, college-going white Americans could count on public money from their government to pay most, if not all, of their cost of higher education. I was one of those lucky ones. My family was working class, and I received a Pell Grant, which made my BA possible. In 1976, state governments provided six out of every $10 of the cost of students attending public colleges. This wasn't considered charity because states saw a return of $3 to $4 back for every dollar they invested in public colleges. When "public" meant "white," public colleges thrived. That's no longer the case. Students of color comprised just 1 in 6 in 1980, but they now make up over 4 in 10. Over this period of growth among students of color, state legislatures began to drastically cut what they spent per student on their public colleges. The average college tuition has nearly tripled since 1991, helping bring skyrocketing student debt to the level of $1.5 trillion in 2020. This is an alarming stealth privatization of America's public colleges. How is it fair, and how is it smart, to price a degree out of reach for the working class just as the degree became the price of entry into the middle class? And now with the recent rulings in North Carolina, which makes tuition vouchers available to children who have no financial need and guts are public school budgets, we see the Republican right pushing the stealth privatization of education even further into K to 12. I am grateful that this board appreciates that "public" means everyone, that public schools in Guilford County know that a healthy democratic society depends on white and children of color of all classes being able to grow up, learning that it is normal to sit across from each other and solve problems. And it's important experience to be on the same team in sports, and it's a blessing to have lasting friendships that cross the lines of color and class. Of course, this board has no control over what happens in Raleigh, but it can continue to examine who is being privileged and who is being harmed by each decision you make. Thank you for making public schools in Guilford truly public.
Thank you. Ann Beatty, followed by Betsy Harrington. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Ann Beatty, and I live in Greensboro. I'm an English teacher at the Early College at Guilford, where last week we begin our new school year, and I'm also a GCS parent with three children in elementary, middle, and high school. I came to say thank you to all the board members for all you're doing to lead our district this year, especially given the challenging budget decisions, both at the county and district levels. These decisions about what to fund and how are complicated, and you have to choose between multiple worthy agendas. I'd like to encourage you to continue to prioritize equity and the need to redress historical injustices as you make these decisions. As a county, we have a responsibility to do the best we can by all children, not just those coming from communities with the most resources and sometimes the loudest voices. In my classroom, I have a poster with a quote by the science fiction writer Ursula Le Guin. She claims, "If you cannot or will not imagine the results of your actions, there's no way you can act morally or responsibly. Imagination has to be trained into foresight and empathy." She goes on to explain that literature, and specifically fiction, is a way to develop this imaginative empathy. Sharing our stories helps us see the humanity in each other. But this foresight and empathy can also help us see the effects of our actions on others. For example, the way individual decisions, such as taking public vouchers to pay for private school for one's child, can have harmful effects on the collective whole, such as the decrease in funding available to public schools with declining enrollment. We all bear the responsibility to imagine the results of our individual actions on the collective community. These days, we often hear individual liberty for the rights of the individual or even parents' rights touted as a good thing, and they can be, but we also must take on responsibility for the impact our individual decisions have on other people. This responsibility applies to a realm near and dear to my heart, reading. What happens to the whole community when a vocal minority tries to restrict the books available to children in GCS? I would like to commend this board for its past commitment to supporting the freedom of our students to read a wide variety of books that reflect a wide variety of experiences. Of course, any parent has the right to determine the books their own child reads and at what age, yet no one parent should have the right to determine the books that every child reads. Such decisions should be left to the professionals in our classrooms and media centers, with every parent a part of the conversation for their own child. I can vouch for the wide array of viewpoints, belief systems, and values in this district. We need age-appropriate books available to children that reflect these varied perspectives for many reasons, but one of the most important is that such books foster less fear and more understanding of people whose lives might be very different from our own. I came here to say I appreciate the efforts of this board to resist fear-mongering around what our children read, and I want to encourage my colleagues across the district to resist it as well, thank you.
Thank you. Betsy Harrington, followed by John DeBeere. Welcome.
My name is Betsy Harrington, I live at 1602 Alderman Drive in Greensboro. Madam Chair, Board Members, Dr. Oakley, thank you for your service on behalf of the students, teachers, and administrators and support staff of Guilford County Schools. At a time when public education seems to be a primary target for politics of fear and sowing distrust and division, we desperately need leaders who will stand up to groups like Moms for Liberty, who seek to impose their will on all children and parents, as though they represent the will of all parents. Make no mistake, these are loud voices, but they're a minority, and they're part of a well-connected web of national groups who are trying to destroy the foundational democratic principles and institutions set out in the U.S. Constitution. Public education is not the only focus of this movement, but it is clearly one of their goals. Not only have they underfunded public schools and provided vouchers enticing parents to leave public schools, but they spread propaganda and seek to control how and what children are taught in public schools in hopes of bringing about their own narrow vision of the world. They sow doubt by manufacturing ideas of so-called threats to children to mobilize white parents. And in my observation, it is almost exclusively white parents creating an exacerbating fear. Today's children are growing up in a very complex world, and they need to be prepared for the rapid changes ahead. Perhaps they need to learn critical thinking more than anything else, given the ready availability of information and misinformation from seriously questionable sources. Now, in addition to sanitizing public school curriculum, these anti-government groups and conspiracy influencers are pushing national parks and national museums to whitewash our history by excluding mention of the parts of our past that might make some people uncomfortable. Well, we should feel uncomfortable about some of the things our ancestors have done, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't learn it. Some white parents seem to be worried that their children will feel bad if they're taught some of the less flattering, less-than-flattering chapters of our national story. But hiding from our full history does not make America great. We need more, not less, taught about our true history, the parts that are to be celebrated as well as those that we hope never to repeat. And our teachers should be trusted to teach their students at an age-appropriate level about the complexity of our society and world. Thank you again for standing up for all children and all of our schools, regardless of the location of the school or the income level of the parents. All schools can be great schools when they're treated equitably and given the resources they need. Thank you for valuing inclusion and equity, it matters.
Thank you. John DeBeere, followed by Lizzie Biddle.
My name is John DeBeere, I live in 2905 Wynwood Drive in Greensboro. It's my honor to be here, Madam Chair, Board, Dr. Oakley. So in thinking about the role of the, um, School Board, I'm thinking about my eleven-year-old granddaughter. She's actually in Buncombe County, not in Guilford County, but still. And she's spending the summer, um, in a Shakespeare troupe, I think, performing King Lear next weekend. And I was just thinking that, um, that's probably an inappropriate book for an eleven-year-old to be reading, right? But she seems to be surviving. And it's your role to be a Board of Education, not a Board of Indoctrination. And education is much harder than indoctrination. Indoctrination is teaching kids what to think, and what not to think, and what not even to think about. Whereas education is helping somebody engage the wisdom of the past with the new things which are emerging in the future, and be able to apply it, critically and in community, with their head and with their heart and with their gut. So to do that, you need, you need people who are skilled at doing that. You need really good teachers, who are well-trained and paid enough that they don't have to take second jobs. You need access to a full range of literature and books, not one cut down to a narrow point of view. You need diversity education, diversity inclusion, um, whatever it is, D E I. You need those programs, because teaching the diversity of kids in school, so that everybody's able to learn, is hard. You need resources, and you don't have enough of any of those things. And that's intentional, I believe, because an uneducated public that has been indoctrinated is easier to control. And so we can live in an authoritarian structure with the benefit of a few oligarchs, and that's certainly the way we're headed. So we need to resist, so you need to do your job, and good luck to you, thank you.
Thank you. Lizzie Biddle, followed by Dreshanta Brinson. Welcome.
Good evening, esteemed Board of Education members, Guilford County School staff, and my fellow community members. My name is Lizzie Biddle, and I live on Ainsworth Drive, close to Guilford College. And many of the sentiments I'm gonna be sharing with you, I echo previous comments from, uh, Public Comments that we've already heard, which affirms that there's many of us in the community that feel similarly about these issues. Unfortunately, there is a great deal of noise, as we've heard, coming from a numerically small number of people in our community and our country. While on the surface, they seem to be calling for his parents' rights, the individual liberty and freedom, it's actually manifesting as books being banned, history being erased, vouchers of public school dollars going to already privileged families, and really erosion of that common good that many of the previous public speakers mentioned. Where is that responsibility and accountability for the impact of those so-called parents' rights? Where is the accountability for the rights of those parents and students and families who are being affected? Freedom does not mean one has the right to hurt others, or control others, or demonize others. All families, parents, and caregivers are free to have their children read or not read things they choose, and Guilford County Schools allows this, as far as I understand. They are not, however, free to choose for other students. That's the, that's the important subtlety, and we need to name what is actually happening. It is a thinly veiled move towards authoritarianism, one that in fact erodes that common good and diminishes all of our rights, especially those who are most marginalized. As I've already stated, I think it's worth stating again, many people in our community are saying no. Not here in Guilford County. I was so heartened to remind myself that in both 2020 and 2022, the school facilities bonds passed by overwhelming majorities and bipartisan support, the fruits of which we're seeing this year as folks enter new school buildings to start the year. It reminds me that I am part of a majority in our community who believe in that common good, believe in and see the benefits of a vibrant, well-funded, public education system that's not just for themselves as individuals and their children, but really sees the benefits for all of us. I echo the appreciation for all of the hard work of our board members and the staff as you begin this new year, and all that you are doing to make the best schools for all of our students. I urge you to reject policies that potentially censor, erase, or discriminate as public dollars and support at that federal level will shrink, or unfortunately are eliminated altogether. Know that those of us who are here for fairness and equities in our schools, we show up consistently to thank you for that work that you're doing for fairness and appreciation of all needs of all students, thank you.
Thank you. Dreshanta Brinson, followed by Susan Williams. Welcome.
Good evening, Board Members.
Good evening.
My name is Dreshanta Brinson, I'm a resident of Guilford County and a proud mother of three GCS students. I am also a professional mediator who works every day to help people navigate differences and build understanding. In my work, I've learned that conflict isn't something to fear, it's an opportunity for growth. We build stronger communities when we listen to different perspectives, even the ones that make us uncomfortable. That is why I find it deeply troubling to see a growing movement led in largely part, led in large part by groups like Moms for Liberty to remove books, restrict curriculum, and silence voices of entire communities in our schools. These actions are often presented as protecting children, but they do the opposite. We erase Black history, LGBTQ+ experiences, immigrant voices, or honest truths about our past. We are not preparing students for life, we are protecting them from reality, and that kind of protection leaves them unprepared to lead, solve problems, and engage in a diverse world. As a mother, I want my children, and all children, to learn in classrooms where they can explore ideas, ask hard questions, and develop critical thinking skills our democracy needs. As a mediator, I know that understanding only grows as we face rather than erase perspectives different than our own. Families in our county are diverse, values are diverse. Public schools exist to serve all families, not just the loudest or most politically motivated ones. Parents already have the right to guide their own child's education, but no parent should have the power to decide what every student can read, learn, or discuss. I urge this board to reject any policy rooted in censorship, discrimination, or political agenda. Let's make our schools, our classrooms, make sure our classrooms are inclusive, fact-based, and places where every student belongs, every family is represented, respected, and every history is told, thank you.
Thank you. Susan Williams, followed by Suzanne Schallhorn. Hope I said your name right. Welcome.
Speak loud, even if your voice shakes. Hello, my name is Suzy Williams, and I live on Mayflower Drive. I have lived in Greensboro my entire life, and I'm a proud alumni of Irving Park, Swan, Page, GTCC, and Guilford College. I am now a proud parent of two General Greene Gators who joined me tonight. Guilford County Schools is in the DNA of my entire life. I am who I am because of the Guilford County School teachers and librarians that shaped me. I was 12 years old when I first read The Diary of Anne Frank. I remember staying up late to devour her diary under my covers with a flashlight. I was 16 when I first read The Autobiography of Malcolm X, and I remember skipping going to the mall because I couldn't put it down. I am not Jewish or a Black man. I have never been persecuted for my religion or skin color. But could I both relate and learn from Anne Frank and Malcolm X? Am I a better person for their stories? Yes, yes, and yes. There are moms in this room who look just like me who think these types of books should be pulled from the shelves. These moms are wrong. They are outnumbered, they are close-minded, and they are losing. Never in history has the good guy burned books. Dress it up and call it a book ban, or liberty, or parents' rights, let's call a spade a spade. Y'all trying to burn books. In 20 years, we will all suddenly have been on the right side of history, the side that never burned books, the side that believed in equitable, diverse, and well-funded education. We will have all fought to abolish ICE, decried the genocide of Palestine, and voted against politicians who called healthcare for children while simultaneously building a $200 million ballroom in his temporary house. To all the anti-fascist moms wondering what to do, show up. To the polls, to the school board meetings, to the streets. There are more of us than there are of them, but it means nothing if we don't show up. Now is the time. I thought it would be fitting to end with a quote from one of my favorite movies, Professor Henry Jones, while he was being tortured by Nazis, and Indiana Jones and the Last Crusade. It tells me that goose-stepping morons should try reading books instead of burning them. Thank you.
Thank you. Suzanne Schallhorn, followed by Ebony Burnett.
Good evening, thank you so much, School Board Members, Dr. Oakley, and our Chair, and fellow Guilford residents, for this opportunity to speak to you. I love Greensboro and Guilford County more broadly for its diversity, for its civil rights history, and for its character. And I'm very thankful for the public school education my two kids are receiving, one in elementary and one in middle. Go Jesse Worton Giraffes and Men in Hall Mustangs. Both of their schools are an integral part of our communities. I am so thankful for everything this board has done to promote a school system that is welcoming to all and that does its level best to use education to reduce the socioeconomic disparities that are historically ingrained in our community. So as we approach the new school year, I wanted to speak tonight to say that there are so many of us who wish to encourage you to continue to do all you can to keep our schools welcoming to all students, regardless of their race, their religion, their orientation, or any other factor. We are living indeed in perilous times. We have witnessed remarkable social change in our area, but we are also witnessing a backlash from people who feel threatened. A surge in white supremacy and xenophobia, exclusionary policies against the LGBTQ community, rampant anti-science disinformation, efforts to deny the realities of U.S. history, degradation of the boundaries between church and state, and I say that as a Christian myself. So I ask you, do not give in to hate, to privilege, to anti-science disinformation, or to the pressure to whitewash history. I believe in the power of well-run, fact-based, and fully funded public schools to elevate communities, and in doing so, to transform generations for the better, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Ebony Burnett followed by our final speaker, Ellen Fisher.
Welcome. My name is Ebony Burnett, and I live in District Four. I'm just here to say thank you. Thank you for being champions for children. We live in a time of mounting challenges across the nation. School boards are wrestling with tough decisions in the face of political division, economic strain, and lingering pandemic impacts on students' well-being. These are not easy challenges to navigate, but here in Guilford County, you have chosen to lead with a steady hand, a clear compass, ensuring student success is our North Star. And you don't just show up for the big decisions, you show up for the community. On Sunday at the Coliseum at the Heads Up for Our Youth Back-to-School Rally, Board Member Diane Bellamy Small was right there with us, chatting with students and families. And that's what leadership looks like, not just sitting at the dais making policy, but standing in the crowd, celebrating our kids, and maybe even dodging some balloons. Your commitment is not just seen in moments like that, but in the everyday choices that ripple out to touch every child and their family. You have worked to ensure that every student, whether in our rural communities, urban neighborhoods, or somewhere in between, has access to opportunity. You've invested in equity, not as a slogan, but as a lived reality, making sure resources reach the schools and the students who need them most. And now, as we emerge from the difficult years of the pandemic, you are not content with recovery, you are pursuing excellence. And I'm excited about the Achieving Excellence Educational Plan, Achieving Educational Excellence Plan being developed by the North Carolina Board of Education. The draft plan aligns perfectly with our district and the plans we already have in place. We have a big goal in North Carolina to make sure that North Carolina schools are the best in the nation by 2030. We have already done that work in Guilford County to make this a reality. This shared commitment includes preparing every student for life after graduation, revering and supporting our educators, and galvanizing community partnerships to ensure that every child has resources and opportunities they need to thrive. This work has not been without obstacles, budgets are tight, staffing challenges are real, the debates can be loud, and even at times divisive, but your focus has not wavered, and I thank you. You remind us all that when adults put children first, we all win. And for that, on behalf of so many families, educators, and community members, I say thank you. Thank you for seeing and serving every single child, for having the courage to talk about equity and the conviction to act on it. Thank you for standing firm when the world is loud. I'll close with this. The work you are doing now will echo for generations. A decision made today will change the life of a child who will grow up to lead a business, create art, discover a cure, fly jets, or if they're really ambitious, maybe even join the school board someday and write you a thank you speech. So let us keep going together with bold vision, open heart, and an unwavering belief that we have laid the foundation for success. Let's be better together. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker, Ellen Fisher. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Ellen Fisher. I am a mother, grandmother, a teacher of 25 years, and a children's author. My teaching experience includes special need children, English as a second language, and various grades in elementary school. I have taught in both private and public schools. Research has shown us that if children learn to love books and reading early on, they are much more likely to do well in school. And to learn to love books and reading, they must be exposed to all kinds of books, all kinds of subjects. They should be allowed to select what interests them. It's a big world out there with much diversity, and we should have the books available with characters that look like them, books with families that look like theirs, and life choices that they can learn to respect. This is how we teach them tolerance and kindness for all. I feel so passionate about this, that I've helped initiate a program in the Guilford County Schools that brings authors to the children. We have worked hard to bring diverse authors into the schools. We gift their books into the media centers of the participating schools. We want children to see authors who represent them, so they too will grow up to love books and reading, and maybe even become an author someday. Just this past year, we have touched over 62,000 students in the Guilford County Schools. The checkout book rate post-visit for participating schools has increased 84%. That is amazing. All children deserve a good education, and all children should be able to read books of their choice. Thank you for all your hard work to keep our Guilford County Schools inclusive for all.
Thank you. And that concludes the public comments section of our meeting tonight. We're now at approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
Move the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, that passes. Oh, thank you. I'm sorry, Ellen. And Kim, are you there? So Ellen said yes. Kim, are you there? She may have gotten disconnected. Okay. So we're now at the consent agenda. Dr. Oakley?
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Board. This evening's consent agenda includes the following items: Approval of July 2025 Meeting Minutes, Personnel Action Report, Project Ordinance Transfer for Bond Differed Capital Replacement Projects, and Heating, Ventilation, and Air Conditioning HVAC Maintenance Contracts. That concludes this evening's consent agenda for your consideration.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda, but I'd like to pull Item C.
Okay. So this is for, your motion is to approve Items A, B, and D?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Diane? Chrissy?
Yes.
I'm not sure if it's Kim or Ellen. Somebody needs to mute their phone. Thank you. Linda? Thank you, Betty. Yes, Deborah?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Atlin?
Yes.
And Kim?
Yes.
Thank you. That passes unanimously. We are now at Item C. Diane?
Madam Chair, I just would like for Dr. Oakley or Dr. Monk to speak to the, it's the third paragraph where you were realigning some funds to do some other work and where that work is.
Yeah, so with the closure of Washington Elementary School, we're no longer going to move forward with that project, and instead reallocate that fund into the projects that are listed in the bullet. The first one would be for the Page High School existing auditorium and bathroom renovation project, Southwest Elementary School HVAC upgrades, Penn Griffin School for the Arts roof replacement, and the Fairview Elementary School HVAC upgrade.
The reason is because, of course, I've had, you know, a lot of complaints about Penn Griffin's roof leaking and different things, but also since we've been bombarded with red shirts from Page, I hope they hear that we are doing something, and I hope that they'll come to our next meeting and thank us, that we are doing what we can do, okay? So I just wanted that to be stated, you know, because folks come to us, you know, thinking we don't hear them, but, you know, as you know, the reason you're able to do this is because you've got some funds that you can reallocate. And so we're willing, whenever there's money available in other places, to try to, you know, accommodate the most needed places that need that. So that was why I wanted that to be stated publicly, so that Page in particular hears us, and I move the item.
Thank you. Is there a second? All right, thank you. Diane?
Yes.
Chrissy?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Deborah?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
And Kim?
Yes.
And Deanna, yes, that passes unanimously. Thank you. We are now at comments from the chair. Good evening. The busy back-to-school season is here, and we have information to share. So visit our website at www.gcsnc.com/backtoschool, and look under the Family section to find school supply list, information about meals, immunizations, and other important details. You can also find the updated student handbook for the year 2025-2026. Families, GCS will be participating in two back-to-school events that offer free school supplies and book bags. First, the Carl Chavis Y MCA in High Point will host a back-to-school bash from 10:00 to 12:00 on Saturday, August 16th. It's this Saturday. High Point families can meet their principals and pick up a book bag. Then, on Saturday, August 23rd, Guilford County Schools and Shift Ed will host a back-to-school event at the Community Education Center located at 2703 East Florida Street in Greensboro. This event is from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. and is open to all Guilford County Schools families. Guilford County School Departments and community partners will be sharing important back-to-school information, and students must be present to receive school supplies and a book bag. Tomorrow, August 13th, the retirees from the 2024-2025 school year will be celebrated at our annual retirements reception, where we usually ask them to come back soon after they retire. I want to publicly thank them for their service, and I know the Board does, and wish them a relaxing and joyful retirement. Then, the following week, we will hold ribbon-cutting ceremonies for our two new schools, Kaiser Middle and Peeler Hampton Visual and Performing Arts Elementary. It's really a thrill to see these buildings completed and to be able to share them with staff and students in the community. The Kaiser Middle ribbon-cutting will be held this Monday, August 18th, and the Peeler Hampton Visual and Performing Arts Elementary ribbon-cutting will be the next day, Tuesday, August 19th, and both of those are at 4:00 p.m. Thank you, and this concludes my remarks. Dr. Oakley?
Good evening. Last week, we were excited to welcome the first students back to school for the start of the 25-26 school year. Students at our extended-year schools and our early and middle colleges are already back in the classroom. And mark your calendar for our district-wide open houses, which will take place the week right before school begins. So for schools on the traditional calendar, high school open house is Tuesday, August 19th, middle school open house is Wednesday, August 20th, and elementary school open house is Thursday, August 21st, and the first day of school for most students is Monday, August 25th. The new year is always full of exciting firsts and opportunities to grow. We want people to share their photos on social media with the hashtag #BackToGCS so we can celebrate together. Congratulations to our finalists for the 25-26 GCS Teacher of the Year. The five finalists are: Canice Wright, Exceptional Children, High Point Central High; Chelsea Johnson, 7th Grade Science, at Jackson Middle; Michelle McCloyd, at Hairston Middle in 7th Grade Math; Juana Reely, in 1st Grade, at Guilford Elementary; and Frank Sheeran III, Navy JROTC, at Southeast High School. The winner will be announced at our Celebration of Excellence event on September 17th. On August 4th, I had the opportunity to speak to staff members at our very first Mental Health Summit, which was a great success. Employees from across the county came together to learn strategies to help students deal with mental health challenges, spot signs of crisis, and further develop resiliency. This type of work is essential to helping our students both in and outside the classroom. It's not too late to register for the upcoming school year. Visit gcsnc.com/Enroll and click on the Register Now button to secure your spot in your neighborhood school and set your child on the path to success. Finally, I want to express my condolences to the family of Jim Melvin, former Greensboro Mayor, CEO of the Bryan Foundation, and steadfast supporter of Guilford County Schools. He believed in the power of public education and worked tirelessly to improve the lives of families and staff, and his support and dedication to our district was invaluable, and he will be greatly missed. That, thank you, and that concludes my remarks. I am going to turn it over to Dr. Stevens for a brief update on Infinite Campus, which was a statewide change from Power School to a new student information system.
Good evening, Board members, and thank you, Dr. Oakley. I want to begin by reminding you that on November 2nd, 2023, as Dr. Oakley said, the North Carolina State Board of Education awarded a new contract to Infinite Campus in order to modernize the state's student information system in compliance with the state law. The announcement was a surprise to many districts across the state, and Guilford County Schools, along with many other districts, were in the Phase II implementation. Two years went by very quickly, and I'm happy to report that we have successfully transitioned from Power School to Infinite Campus. The system switched over to Infinite Campus on July 14th, 2025, and while this is a major milestone, there's still a significant amount of work left to be completed before the system is fully functional for all users. As with any large-scale change, we expect questions, we expect challenges. But I do want to say that we are here and committed to keeping schools and families informed as we continue to refine and implement the system. I will say that we are excited about the capabilities of Infinite Campus, and according to NCDPI, the system offers robust tools to track and monitor student progress, streamline administrative tasks, and improve communications with parents. The system has features such as the Campus Parent and Campus Student web portals and mobile apps that provide real-time access to grades, attendance, assignments, and student schedules, giving families and students up-to-date information to support student learning. I forgot to click.
It's okay.
So while the system has been turned on for us, that doesn't mean that it's fully operational for end-users. I was waiting for that. Yes. And as I've mentioned, there's still a lot of work that needs to be done. This includes significant setup, configuration, and data validation, work that is required before the system is functional. We are working closely with our Infinite Campus project managers that were assigned to us by NCDPI, and most importantly, we remain on track with the timelines that DPI set for us. We recognize that families are eager to access their campus portal accounts, campus parent accounts, and we understand the frustration with some of the delays that they've experienced. Our process, however, remains the same as in previous years with Power School, which means that Campus Parent will be opened for parents to view schedules seven days prior to the start of school. For the traditional calendar schools, that date is August 18th, and emails with information for how to set up accounts will be sent to families on the morning of August 18th. Early start schools had their accounts activated on August 1st, and there have not been any reported problems with their accounts, and we are now finalizing access for families at our traditional calendar schools. So again, families at those schools should look for an email with information on how to set up their campus parent account. The last thing I want to update you on is that each school has a designated Infinite Campus champion. They will support their colleagues through the transition to Campus Instruction, the new platform that's replacing Power Teacher. School staff should direct questions related to Campus Instruction to their respective ICC. Keep in mind that Campus Instruction is new for our teachers, and like any new tool, it will take time to learn. There will be a learning curve for everyone, including our data managers. As they gain experience with the system, they will become more efficient and confident in using it to share more information about student performance with their families. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Dr. Oakley.
We're happy to answer any questions. Just thought a general awareness would be good, because it took a decade to learn how to use Power School. And it's the system that talks to all the other systems, and so it's a statewide change. Change is hard, we'll get through it, but at the end, we hope the result is a better user experience for family members. So just wanted to make sure everybody had members. So just wanted to make sure everybody had an update.
Thank you. Lynda, Diane, and then Deborah.
This system's been around and is in other states. Can anybody give me any data on how long it's been around and how many states it is in?
I can get a report back to you. I do know that other states with larger public school systems than us have been using it for five, 10 years. I know some of them are in the southern part of the country, but we can get a full list.
Well, the point of the question is to reassure parents that this system's been around, so there should not be a ton of bugs in it or a lot of struggle. It's not a beta system. It is a well-used system. Yes, we will struggle in implementing it and getting trained on it, but it is a system that has been, so there's a lot of support. You've already had, you know, the support already knows what questions are going to be asked and what to expect as we implement it because we're not the first people, you know, first district implementing. So I'm just letting you know that it should go hopefully a lot smoother than maybe Power School did. How's that?
Well, and we're lucky to have Sharon McLeese, who has led us through two big transitions and is a state recognized at the state level as a leader in the work. So we're very fortunate to have her.
So be patient, be patient, and make sure you just, you know, take a deep breath and then call whoever you need for help.
That's right.
Thank you, Diane.
My first question is, what tool do parents need to use in order to be able to access this? Or, I mean, like cellphone?
Yeah, it's web-based, so anything that has internet, and they'll have a login, just like with Power School.
Will the, okay, sometimes, you know, when you log in on a different device, it sends you through some other hoops. So whether they are logging on their phone or whether they're logging on their personal computer, will it give them trouble with that, do you know, or will it just?
It has, I mean, it has, I know all of them have the multi-factor authentication where they have to know that it's you, and then it has rules around passwords where you have to set a certain password that's a strong password, and it expires after a certain period of time. That was the same with Power School. It just is a different platform.
And then my next question is security. Though we don't want to talk about it, we did have a security breach, I think, end of last year with Power School. Are we safer now?
I mean, I think the landscape of security gets stronger as the technology gets stronger, and so this has measures that we didn't have in the other, but nothing's foolproof. I think that's why we have cybersecurity insurance and we have people who pay attention. But that was one hacker who got into the whole nation's Power School level information that impacted North Carolina, and we were not exempt from that.
So it was just that he was that smart and that was?
Pretty much. I hope he's somewhere working for somebody teaching us, helping make it stronger, for sure.
Well, I hope they don't have him just cooling his heels in a prison cell somewhere to harness that kind of brilliance. Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah.
First up, I will say I don't think I'm the only parent who is going to be happy to see the backend of school mint. Oh, my goodness. So that said, will this Infinite Campus include bus information, or are we still using Here Comes the Bus?
We are still going to be using Here Comes the Bus, but this system can link to our transportation system, so it's not quite set up yet, but we are working to get that set up, and once we do, it will be seamless, and parents will be able to find out information about their students and their transportation more efficiently.
Okay, wonderful. Is, like, how does this fit into the gym's system that we've been putting in place?
It's separate. That's way more. That's how HR and finance talk to each other and modernize those archaic systems. This is much more the parent-student side of information.
In one of the phone calls, emails from one of the schools, it mentioned an app. Do we have an app forthcoming that the parents can download, or was that something different?
So they will be able to download the Campus Parent, which is a web app, and that's how they will be able to access their students' information on their phone or whatever device they use.
When that goes live, that might be something we want to maybe update in our communication because it says a GCS app. So when I was going through and looking in the App Store for the app, I was looking for GCS, not Infinite Campus or anything of that nature. So, or maybe send out a link in some of the communications, something like that, to clarify what parents need to download. And I imagine that'll be available on the 18th. Is that in that?
Yes, that's correct. Parents will receive an email from the district that explains everything that they need to do in order to claim their account.
Okay, that sounds great. There was one more. Give me just a second. Okay. And school staff has their own resource person on each campus. Would parents also reach out to the ICC on each campus if they have issues, or where do parents need to go if they have connection problems?
They can contact their schools, but I guess it will depend on what the connection problem is that they're experiencing, and we'll send that information to them when we send the email on the 18th, giving them directions about each situation that they may experience and who they should contact.
Okay. I think that's it. Thank you.
Diane?
For those of us who don't have children where we wouldn't necessarily have access, is there a way for us to just, I'm curious to just see what it looks like, you know, not trying to get into anybody's, you know, because, you know, people do ask us, and I would like to be able to, sure, I can just say, call 370-8100, but if I understand it. So is there a way for me to just see how it works or see what it looks like?
Not in a board member role. I mean, you'd have to be a parent, a guardian, a member of the household, or already have access to a student's data. But there are dummy sites on the Infinite Campus website where you can see what it looks like, whether it's the parent-facing portal or where it's like grades, attendance. So you can just go to infinitecampus.com and see what it looks like, but you can't actually navigate within our system unless you're connected to a child in the household.
Well, that's more what I'm talking about is, is there a way just for me to see what the different components are? Because, you know, sometimes people are talking directly to us, and right now I have no clue of what this, you know, looks like, or, you know. So, I mean, just for my edification.
Yeah, there's some videos and some like what it looks like from the user side on the Infinite Campus website.
So can I ask Dr. Stevens to walk me through that?
We can make sure that you, yes, can, yes, walk through the website.
Thank you.
All right, if there are no more questions, thank you, Dr. Stevens and Dr. Oakley. We're now at action items, and I'll turn it over to Diane. Bellamy Small, Chair of the Policy Committee, to walk through these policies.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening. Tonight, we are considering five policy items that were reviewed by the Policy Committee and were published for public comment in June. Three comments were received, and they were attached to item 8D. Members of the public who would like to view the policy revisions may do so after tonight's board meeting agenda, which is attached to www.gcsnc.com under Board Education. And Madam Chair, there were minor revisions to all these. I can cut to the chase and bring them all at one time unless the attorney says I can't. And will be done other than with item D, I believe it is, I think Mr. Coats had something, but if I could make a motion for us to go ahead and approve items A, B, C, and E.
All right, I'll start with you, Diane.
Yes.
Chrissy?
Yes.
Lynda?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Deborah?
Yes.
David? Turn on your mic. It's A, B, and C. A with school safety, B voting methods, C technology, responsible use, and E staff-student relations policies. Yeah. Okay, thank you. Pastor Charaus?
Yes.
And Kim?
Yes.
Thank you.
I read the policy. I read the comments. I understand that this policy, in effect, is a mandate that we have to have this policy. Saying that, I found myself concerned about the credit recovery section, and some of the comments went to how we administer this, and I'm hoping somebody in administration can talk about that.
So I can talk about credit recovery, and then Dr. Kay can answer policy-specific questions, what's required by the changes at the state level. So every year, students have an opportunity to recover a credit if they did not pass a course required for graduation. Some seniors typically do it in June, and freshmen, sophomore, and juniors can usually get it done in the month of July. There's different vendors that provide platforms for credit recovery. We've gone through a bid process three times since I've been here for the different platforms. Right now, it's Apex Learning, which has kind of two sides. One's online courses and one's credit recovery. Credit recovery will take students through modules that are aligned to the state standards where they take a quiz at the end. It will never replace the value of a classroom teacher, ever. And some are better than others. Odyssey is the platform that was here for decades before that, and, but they're all, they all offer something similar. We acquired that through a bid process, and I think coupled with, I read the comments that from the, I think, the four comments that we got was the disagreement that we should be awarding credits when students go through these online modules, when it doesn't show that they truly have mastered the content. I bet that depends on the situation. I think it really does depend. But we do have to have a process in place for credit recovery, and we do not have the funding to staff teachers in the summer to do full-on courses for credit recovery. And so it is one of those things that's kind of been around a while, and we've changed platforms over time based on what's available in the instructional technology field.
Okay, but just in terms of, we tell the public and we tell our students that we're interested in rigor, but we have budgetary restraints. We have fiscal restraints. If we had the money, I would assume that what you were talking about, getting teachers to do this, would be the way to go, because the comments indicate that basically this is a dumbed-down way of getting credit. And, you know, I understand fiscal restraints. I think we all understand it. All understand it all too well. But I find myself disturbed that we're in this position, and I note we have a congressional candidate here tonight, and I hope if he gets in that he takes note of these things and starts sending some money our way so we can deal with these things. But, yeah, I'm just disturbed by this, and I just wanted to put it out there.
Yeah, and most of them, when they are awarded credit, it's at a pass/fail level. Some are a half-credit, some are a full-credit. It just depends on the nature of the course. Did you want to add anything to that?
And I think it's important to note that the reason that the State Board changed the policy is that there were concerns that there are districts in the state that were awarding core courses, course credits for graduation on a pass/fail basis. And this policy change actually makes it so that there cannot be credits awarded for core courses that are on a pass/fail basis. So when a student does not pass the course the first time, the credit recovery is for the portions of the course that they were not successful in, and then there's a proportional grade that's awarded for the part of the class that they took with the teacher and the parts of the class that they take in credit recovery, and it's a combination of that that appears on their transcript. So there are no more credits starting in the 25-26 school year that are awarded for core classes required for graduation without a numerical grade associated with them. So it's actually requiring a little bit of a higher standard than some districts were using for credit recovery.
Okay, well, thank you.
Madam Chair, I make a recommendation to move item 8D.
Second that, okay. All right. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. All right, that passes unanimously. Sure. But yes, thank you. We're now at board member comments, and I'll start with Chrissy.
All right. First of all, in reference to that last item, although I voted yes, I would like us to be increasing our academic rigor and our standards for graduation. I know there are concerns around that in general. Last week, I had the opportunity to go attend the summer graduation ceremony, and it was wonderful to be able to see those students from all the different schools across the county who needed just a little bit longer to be able to finish up their high school diplomas, have that chance to walk across the stage, get their diploma. Families were super excited, and it was just a really, really fun evening. So thank you for everyone who participated in that. I want to highly encourage people in the communities who are able to consider giving donations of any kind to our schools. As you know, a repeated thread that we keep hearing is about budget concerns and needing to be able to make sure that our students have everything that they need. And if there are things that you happen to have that you think teachers might appreciate, schools might appreciate, reach out to those schools and see if there is some sort of perfect match there. I know that my mother passed away in March, and she had a storage unit filled to the brim with office supplies, and I took a lot of those office supplies out to some of my schools because I know teachers love those things. My husband and I have been going through culling our board game collection, taking board games out to different schools. So if you happen to have things that you think some schools would appreciate, please feel free to reach out to individual schools and do that. And along those same lines, if you don't have anything physical that you can donate to the schools, consider offering your time volunteering, and in particular, if you have any handyman type of skills. I know I've been doing bunches of visits. I've been sending poor Dr. Oakley lots of pictures as I've been out to some of the schools. In particular, our trailers are in need of a lot of love. If you happen to have handyman skills, we had our carpenter here tonight as our employee of the month, and you may have some skills that you might be able to help out with some of the schools while we're in a bit of a funding crisis. Open houses, went to a couple the other week for the early start schools, Allen J. Prep, Johnson Street Global, had a great time going around, talking to teachers and staff at both of those. As Dr. Oakley mentioned, lots of open houses next week as well, and welcome back to almost the rest of all of our students on the 25th, and I think that's it. Thanks so much, and I hope everybody's had a great summer.
Thank you. Diane?
I just want to reinforce that parents who need to check your transportation and, you know, check with us and make sure that you know when your child is supposed to be out there getting on the bus. I had a mother who called me mad because the bus came, then her child went out. Don't work that way. So she wasn't real pleased with me gently saying, do you know what time the bus? So she's dealing with that, but I'm just saying, parents, we can't go back and pick kids up. We're not Uber. So we need for folks to pay attention and be ready for that. Immunization, and I'm not a doctor either, but I can tell you, I'm sitting here alive today because of immunization. I lived through polio and some bird flu and COVID. So, you know, please, parents, don't hesitate to make sure that your children have their vaccinations. I want to recommend, we spent a lot of energy and time, particularly in the last meeting, about naming something, and we've spent, that's one of those things where we do spend time with. And I want to recommend that we ask our schools to have a name And I want to recommend that we ask our schools to have a namesake day or an awareness month about who their school is named for. Because they don't know. I mean, they know who their mascot is, they know what the colors are, but they don't know anything about, you know, who the school is named for. So I hope that that's something that would be a part of Spirit Week or something where we, you know, if we say this is important, then shouldn't the kids know? You know, I went to R.J. Reynolds, believe me, I knew who R.J. Reynolds was. All politics is local and we need to pay attention to the fact that there is a local municipal election coming up. I've been trying to explain to people that the decisions that are made in Washington, decisions that are made at the state, we're the ones who are here on the ground that have to try to make sense of the crazy, if it's crazy, or whatever. So you need to have competent people who understand and who want to engage their community to, you know, be your leaders. You just can't put people up there who just want to look pretty, that don't work. So check your voter registration because there have been some changes even since the last election. I want to congratulate Heads Up for Youth. They gave out a thousand book bags on Sunday. And we had GCS staff there. And I just want y'all to know, I'm proud of GCS staff. They represent well, Dr. Oakley, as far as being there and engaging. And then I also want to give a shout out to Reading Connection. They gave away books. And, you know, they didn't have a Penguin book because I asked them. But they did have other books that they gave away and parents were just walking by, you know, grabbing those books at the time. So I just wanted to give a... And they said that they are a partner of ours, that Reading Connection says that they are a partner of GCS. So thank you for your effort and other community organizations that are partnering with us to make it better for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
Recently, while visiting the Greensboro Science Museum, I noticed a group of children, some of whom wore GCS summer camp T-shirts. The Science Center, which the museum is a part, partners with our schools to provide classes in natural history and visiting privileges at a considerable discount. The museum and its adjacent zoo are a tremendous community asset. And I noted our children seemed attentive in class and in the other places where I encountered them. The summer is also a time for a district-run arts institute, a summer school for high school students who have failed a course needed for graduation. The district also has a summer school for rising second, third, and fourth graders who do not meet the minimum acceptable standard on the end-of-year reading assessment and a very limited program for students taking their first advanced placement course. In total, the district spends $2 million on these programs. When ESSER funding was available during and for a time after the pandemic, $15 million was available in used and fully booked remedial and advancement summer schools and a variety of enrichment programs available to each and every one of our children. Currently, we do not provide a summer program for children about to enter kindergarten nor for our middle school students. The full-range programs offered when ESSER funding was available kept students academically and socially engaged while school was out. These programs, in my view, were an important investment in our children. North Carolina is ranked 49th nationwide in effort to support education based on percentage of state gross domestic product. We can and should be doing better by our children all through the year, including when school is not in session. Are our funders listening? And I noted earlier that we have a congressional candidate here. I've been going to school board meetings for over 40 years. I've never seen a congressional candidate at a school board meeting. But Richard Ajade is here tonight and I just wanted to make note of that.
Thank you. Board member Erby requested to go next and board member Napper said that was fine.
I appreciate that. I just want to encourage everybody again to sign up to volunteer at our schools because oftentimes we want to participate in things at the school level, but we haven't signed up to become a volunteer because that process requires us to do a background check to make sure that our students and staff are safe. So that's very important for us to sign up to become a volunteer so that you can go through our process so that you can be cleared to be a volunteer. Tomorrow is the last day of Freedom School and they are having their closing program at Old View at 2 o'clock. So I just want to encourage you, if you're available, to please stop by and seize Freedom School. Freedom School is a powerful program that we do over the summer with our students. And I also learned that this summer that many of the teachers who were teaching in Freedom School also incurred expenses out of their pocket for their classroom. So that will be something I want people to put Freedom School teachers as part of their opportunities to donate to Freedom School as well. And I appreciate everyone tonight and let's make 25, 26 a wonderful year. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Deborah?
I kind of want to dovetail into something that Diane Bellamy Small and Erby and Chrissy, Chrissy Pratt have already said. And that is, you know, as we go back into the school year and we're looking at the things that we need versus the things that we have, I would like to encourage everyone to volunteer and step foot in our schools. I am immensely pleased to see all the progress that's been made in Page High School. The parents and the students came here at the end of last semester with some serious concerns and we've done our best, as Diane said, to address those and bring Page back up to where it should be and give those students and that campus everything they deserve. I'd like to give a shout out right now to the principal there, Eric Nagley, because over the summer I have seen him covered in dirt, covered in paint, covered in everything, doing his best to work with the crews that are in that school and give it his time and attention even over the summer. And it's been inspiring to see. And his work has not gone unnoticed. About that employee of the month nomination, I'll get there, I swear. And then also to take a look at our new schools as we build them. And just, you know, especially if you are a parent and you have a child on the first days of these schools, or if you can make it to the ribbon cuttings and take a tour and take a look around, watch the children as they go into these schools. You know, we still get, it feels like a no-win sometimes because everybody needs the best environment to learn in, but at the same time, we get fussed at for waste. But seriously, stop and take a look at the children when they step foot in these schools, the teachers when they get to work in these fantastic environments and see the positivity that it brings, see the uplift in these children and these teachers, all the admin staff, and see the wonders that it does when the environment around you is what you need to do the job you need to do, whatever that may be. It's a beautiful thing and we're doing the best work we can with everything that we have, as everybody, I know I'm not going to harp again on the limited budget. And this comes from a place, just like last week, where I had someone approach me from one of the minority groups that was mentioned earlier in a parking lot and tell me, they would never find anything good about Guilford County schools, they would never admit they were wrong, they would never apologize for anything they said, and they would be right there at my door to fight me on everything I ever said about it. And you know what? If you want to be on a doorstep and you want to fuss about our schools, be in the schools. You can be on my doorstep if you want to, you're not going to get very far, my house isn't that big. If you want to go and fuss about what's going on in these schools, be there. Give your time, give your money if you can, give your supplies that you don't need, whatever you have, even if it's just your attention. And you will see the positive. It is there and it is glaring and it's coming right at us as the school starts. I've never seen my kids so excited and I might be a little excited too.
Thank you.
Good evening. First of all, thank you staff for a great job. When I'm out and about, either if in my schools or in the community, I normally see someone from the staff there also. So thank you for all you do. I attended the Dudley Leadership Academy Camp, which consists of a lot of leaders in Greensboro, not only leaders but program directors and business people. And they gave the students a wealth of knowledge by telling them how they start their business and what to expect and how to start saving money. So I thought that was a great idea. I attended the Meet the Principal at Bluefoot Elementary School. We have a new principal there. Her name is Ms. Bonaparte. I want to say Bonapartee, the E at the end. Bonaparte, and she is doing an amazing job by getting out in the community to meet the families. And they really enjoyed her. Thank you, Dr. Stevens, for the information shared about the infinite campus. And I'm sure we are going to enjoy it once it's up. I was invited to do the greetings for the Ushers Convention last Saturday. And they talked a lot about Guilford County Schools and wanted to do some work with Guilford County Schools and share some ideas and also bring some tools, whether it's for the school or for the students. So they're supposed to be getting in contact with one of your senior staff. I look forward to attending at least eight of my 10 schools' open house. And I'm glad that some of them have staggered theirs, like three a day. But I'm especially happy about attending the BPA because I know that the families and the students would be very, very happy to walk into that brand-new school with their eyes just as bright and shining. The summer graduation was also great. The students enjoyed it, the parents hallelujah and thank you, Jesus. And they really, really was excited about their child graduating. Lincoln had their Meet the Parents and Students night this evening for the sixth-grade students and that was well-attended, I mean, very well-attended. And staff, again, thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Well, I know everybody's working hard and getting ready for the 25, 26 school year. I know a lot of the principals are very excited about getting in their schools and I'm not so sure about our children. So what I would say to them is enjoy what you have left of your summer. We have talked a lot about volunteers. I don't know exactly how easy it is to fill out the... Is it easy?
It's like a one-page.
Background check?
On the website, it takes just a minute.
And, you know, the other question I would have on that is, you know, if the schools would make a list of the type of volunteers they need, where that could be looked up? You know, if they have a, you know, they're trying to put something together, they're really, they need people to help with secretarial type copy-in, that kind of thing, or they need people to read. Or, you know, if we could get to where you could go on to a school and see, these are the type volunteers, because there's nothing any worse than a volunteer showing up and having nothing to do. And I have seen that and it's because we don't have good organization. So, you know, if we had a school and they said, "We want to get readers, we want to get..." Because they may have something or they just need people to come in and where there's a place to go. I know when I did it, I had a place, I would go in at a set time and there was stuff there and it would say, "Copy five copies, copy this, do this." And all I had to do was go in there and stand in the copy room and all the teachers knew to bring it in there. And that's what I did for my two hours, is just do all that copy and so they didn't have to do it. But it was well-organized so that when I got there, there was work for me to do. So I don't know, I'd like to see it where we could put a little effort in organizing, you know, or ask the schools if they're even interested in finding a way to say, "We need these kind of volunteers." And that way, we could advertise that somehow and maybe get those volunteers in there. Just an idea. Anyway, have a great summer, what's left of it, and looking forward to 2025, 26.
Thank you. Pastor Sherrill?
Hello, everyone. I would like to build on the theme of volunteerism, which has been strong tonight and is certainly on our minds as we approach the new school year. And let me add to that, that beyond volunteering, I hope that we can encourage people to, along with that, do something else that, of course, is so vital to so many of us on the board. And that is, when you volunteer and when you see what is happening in our schools and when you invest yourself in it, I hope that it motivates you to be an advocate for our schools to receive the funding that they need. So often, what we see in volunteer efforts is compensation for failures at higher levels of leadership to provide what's needed. And so just a reminder, as we encourage volunteering, that our schools are not under-volunteered. They are not failing from poor leadership from staff, they are not struggling from lack of parent involvement. What our schools are more than anything else are underfunded. And so any investment that we make in our schools, I hope that it comes with the kind of advocacy that can make for that kind of lasting change. Beyond that, I will say, I thank the miracle of technology and the miracle of Lisa Nolan for the chance to join tonight. I'm joining from the beach, which leads me to say that all this talk about the start of the school year, let me wish everyone a happy summer because it's still summer. So I hope everyone enjoys the last week of summer, makes the most of it, and that that gives you the strength you need to have that excellent start to the school year that I know we all want. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, pastor. And I'll just also continue on that theme of, Diane, I really like that Name Recognition Day idea for the schools. I was looking over some notes that Nettie Code, who's a real mentor of mine and community leader here, but the Nettie Code Apartments on MLK, MLK used to be Ashborough Street and Jim Melvin lived on Ashborough Street and his father had a gas station there, but it was named Ashborough Street because it took you to Ashborough. And then, you know, some advocates lobbied to have, you know, in honor of MLK and so that's how that changed. But that was Caldwell Elementary School that was turned into Nettie Code Apartments. But when you don't know that history, it's just something's really lost. So I really like Name Recognition Day for our schools. And Chrissy, I was able to donate my dad's hearing aids because they're very expensive. And so being able to donate that to Guilford County Schools. And I was really hooked on this DIY glam for a while. And so I was going to all the craft stores and getting glue and blingy stuff and ribbons and plaques and just making stuff. And I have trunks and trunks of stuff that I've been giving to teachers. I have two trunks, I'm waiting for one teacher to come and get the other two. So, yeah, they love it and there's just a ton of fun stuff in there. And I'm real appreciative of all the people doing all the back-to-school drives. But this morning, I had to take my dogs to the vet and they're going to the vet across town now because my daughter's best friend, who graduated from Dudley Academy, is a veterinarian and she's a veterinarian now at Northwest Greensboro. And so while I'm driving from my neighborhood, which is a historically divested neighborhood over to Northwest Greensboro, the landscape changes drastically. And while I appreciate all the things that people are donating, I know people in my neighborhood want to live in a really nice neighborhood. And if we had a lot of those things and that infrastructure, we would need these back-to-school drives, you know, in our neighborhood, the way that we have them. And so while I appreciate them, I know that they are the byproduct of some historic events and decisions that were made. And this isn't just about aesthetics. Children that live in poor communities have higher resting blood pressure. Children. And that doesn't change because they get a degree and move to a nice neighborhood. It doesn't. That blueprint stays. And that might contribute to the maternal and infant health statistics Dr. Oakley and I attended last Friday, every baby Guilford that was unveiling, that our statistics are very alarming. And with all of the effort that people have made, they're actually worse. We had, I think, 53 deaths, 37 were black babies, a third of them qualify or would be status under the preventable category. And so where people live shouldn't dictate, you know, one, if you're going to make it to your first birthday, or two, if you're going to die before you're 60. And so we really need to do something about that groundwater, that foundation, while we're supplying people with all of the little things that they need. All right, and thank you, Dr. Oakley and staff. I've had to call everybody from Shirley to Dr. Oakley. I've had to call everybody from Shirley to Dr. Oakley and everyone else because people are calling now and needing help with things, whether it's an employee or a student or a parent. So thank you all for everything you do. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
For a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? Thank you.